Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the December 17th, 2024 Select Board Meeting. May I have a motion to have a clerk pro tem? Mr. Chadwick is on call, and we're afraid that he might be called. So Ms. Corbett has volunteered.
I so move.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made a second.
Second.
Okay. Motion made a second, and is there any further discussion on the motion to appoint Sarah as clerk pro tem? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call. Chadwick?
Yes.
Quirk?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
And myself. Yes, thank you very much. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Quirk is present, Ms. Whiteside, Mr. Chadwick is present remotely, and I am here.
As well as Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Bowen are also remote.
Thank you. Excellent. Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Dooner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a lot of jumping around to do tonight because it's, we have certain things that we have to get done at certain times, but I want to welcome Kelly Dooner and Jared Valenzola from Plymouth County, as well as our new elected official, who we hope will come back and see us after the first of the year when all of these licenses have been taken care of. So, Mr. Valenzola, could you identify yourself for the record and tell us why you're here?
Yes, I am Jared Valenzola, Plymouth County Commissioner and Chairman from the town of Plymouth, and it is my privilege to be here to present the town of Wareham with an ARPA check of the amount of $4,036,848.53. We began this program about two and a half, three years ago, and just a little bit of history because this is actually our first and will be our only visit to Wareham with, you reach in your full allocation. In 2020, when the CARES Act was passed, there was some consternation with Plymouth County's administration of those funds. The state demanded we return those funds, and it, believe it or not, a handful of local communities did as well. Wareham thankfully not being one of them, but there were towns that did. And in the final analysis of the CARES Act, the town of Wareham received 50% more dollars from the CARES Act than a like-sized community outside Plymouth County received. Plymouth County administered that grant at .87% administration cost, the lowest in the nation, and we were able to deliver those funds more quickly. Communities waited several months, weeks, even up to a year to receive those funds that Plymouth County managed to disperse. So we're really proud of the success of CARES, and I'd like to talk about that briefly at the top, just so that the viewers at home, as well as you folks, are aware of that. We've pivoted to ARPA. I always often quip that CARES was our firstborn child. ARPA became our secondborn child, and we've been, we've been on the road for the last two and a half, three years, and a lot of communities have been able to utilize these funds for a lot of great projects, such as what you folks have used it for, Swift Beach Sewer Repairs and a Water Pollution Control Facility. So we've worked incredibly well. I know the Treasurer wanted me to extend his regrets, as well as my colleagues, Commissioner Wright, that they were unable to be here this evening, but working with Derek and the entire team here in Wareham has been an excellent pleasure, a great pleasure. And then I will ask Senator-elect just to introduce herself, but before I do, I do want to just acknowledge your former selectman, Alan Slaven, who spent many years as your representative on our advisory board, which is our legislative branch, and he represented the town of Wareham very well. He served as their chairman, as our chairman, up until his departure from this board. We were really honored by his work and his support, as well as your late state representative, Susan Williams Gifford, who was a personal friend of mine, but also a staunch advocate for the town of Wareham for these funds. So we're really grateful for her. We certainly miss her. I'll just ask if the Senator-elect would just like to introduce herself as well, and then we'll proceed.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Kelly Dooner, your new state senator. I'm being sworn in on January 1st. I spent a lot of time in Wareham this past summer, and I fell absolutely in love with the community, and just looking forward to making sure that you guys have representation on Beacon Hill and that my door is always open and I'm always a phone call away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't we introduce ourselves?
Oh, I'm Sarah Corbett.
Who has, you were just elected.
Yeah, in May.
In May, however, you have a little history. What have you done? Why? Why?
Well, I used to be a reporter with the local weekly newspaper, Wareham Courier, that was many moons ago, and I never thought that I would ended up on the other side of the table, but I have, and it's been a really great experience so far.
Awesome. We're really pleased to have her. Sherry.
My name is Sherry Quirk, and I was elected at the same time that Sarah was, so very recently. I've been a Wareham resident since 2001 on a part-time basis and moved here a couple of years ago after I retired. I'm a lawyer, and for many years I was an energy lawyer, practicing in Washington, D.C., and then ended my career as the General Counsel of the Tennessee Valley Authority. So very interested in many of the energy issues that surround us in this state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chadwick?
All right. Before we move on to you. Give me one second, please, sorry.
He's a firefighter on duty in Dennis right now.
Appreciate his service there. That's, as I always say, far more important work than I think what any of us do.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. We had a call coming over, and I do have someone covering me right now. So my name's Jared Chadwick. I've been part of the Select Board for almost three years now. I've been a firefighter, paramedic with the town of Dennis for 10 years, and before that, originally coming from Nantucket. And the whole reason I ran to become part of the Select Board is I'm a huge advocate for the youth in our community, and I want to make sure every kid is heard and helped in any way they possibly can. That's about it. And Ms. Dooner, congratulations. Thank you very much for attending tonight.
Thank you. I am Judith Whiteside, Chair at the moment of the Select Board. I think I've had five different iterations of being a selectman, starting in the early 1980s. I'm a retired Senior Vice President, Commercial Lending at the old Shawmatt Bank, which is now Hartford National. I don't even know what it's called anymore. And then I had a 12-year stint of teaching English here in the Wareham High School system. So I have seen everything.
I believe it.
And dealt with everything.
Commercial lending to high school must have been an interesting transition.
Actually...
Or maybe similar in some ways, too.
Yeah, because being a commercial lender, you get to meet so many different people, so many different things, and the kids in Wareham are just really wonderful people, and their parents, their guardians as well. Anyway, Derek, what would you like to say? Mr. Sullivan?
Well, first, I'd like to thank the Commissioner for all that the county does for the town. I think, I don't think people realize what they do. You know, obviously, it's with the, the Commissioners give, give the Treasurer, Mr. O'Brien, a lot of ability to do the work. It starts off with our retirement fund, which they are great stewards of, and we're ahead of the game of fully funding that than what's required. And we were one of the first ones to enter the Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund. We put money in a little bit later, but we were the first ones in. I think our returns for the last year are over 20% right now, and we're part of the Mayflower Municipal Health Group, which utilizes the staff. They do procurement, some of the joint purchasing, including vehicles, fuel, road salts. So the county does a tremendous amount for the, for the communities within it, and I'm very thankful for all they do. And it's great to see Senator-elect Dooner. This is her second time since, since the election that I've seen her, which is pretty amazing. So thank you for already being a great part of the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, no, and I'm glad, I'm glad Mr. Sullivan mentioned some of those programs. It's 25% right now on the OPEB Trust Fund that we are currently returning year over year. So, you know, as I often quip, and he did a wonderful job summarizing a lot of what we do. We handle some of the unfunded stuff for government, but quite candidly, if we weren't doing it, it would fall to the community as an unfunded mandate. And I know for me, and I know Senator-elect Dooner said the same thing, one of the things I've really come to enjoy being a Commissioner, I grew up in Rockland, I live in Plymouth now, but it really has been, been getting to know these communities. Wareham certainly being at the top of the list of one of the, one of my favorites to visit and come to. It's really sort of a, it's kind of a hidden gem on the South Coast here. I know it's the gateway to Cape Cod, as I often quip, let, let the tourists really keep driving through, stop and spend some money in Wareham, but then, you know, overpopulate the Cape and leave Wareham as a, as a nice gem that it is. So we're really, again, proud of this program, happy to be here. Just some quick last bit of information about ARPA. We are closing in on the deadline. Now, again, Derek and his team worked incredibly hard with our team to get your full allocation for these projects. The Treasurer can't be here this evening because we've tethered him to his desk to keep processing applications. We're meeting Thursday. We're meeting again the 30th and the 31st if we have to. As I joke, we'll have champagne for A, when the ball drops, and B, when we're, you know, culminating this program. But we've worked hard to also keep our administration of this program at 1 and 1/4%, which the national average is about 7 to 10. So we, again, are able to, to really return a maximum amount of dollars to the community. We were also able to, and this is the last, last bit, last point I'll make, we were able to earn about $6 million in interest due to our management of this program. And talking about things like retirement, again, the unfunded stuff for government, but the county currently has a $10 million retirement liability. We took $3 million of that and prefunded that down to $7 million, which is actualized savings of about 7.5% annually. We've also put another million into our OPEB Trust Fund. So we're continuing to do, again, the unfunded stuff. This is fun, but some of the other stuff is unfunded, but, but frankly, it's, it's important stuff, and as you all are aware, that OPEB liability is a multi-billion dollar piano hanging over the heads of many municipalities. So, you know, to Derek, Derek's point, a lot of foresight on your board and on your town leadership to get involved in that trust fund early, to begin funding that liability. And then, of course, lastly, you know, I can, I've known Senator-elect Dooner for several years. This won't be certainly her first visit. She's already on hit-the-ground-running, making sure Wareham's getting their funds, but I can't say enough how much of a stellar advocate the town of Wareham's going to have in her as your next state senator, starting January 1st, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to add to what you said. I think that Derek Sullivan was very appropriately aggressive in terms of joining the Plymouth County system and actually has paid huge dividends for us, and so Derek and his team of people have, thank you very much for that, Derek and John, et al. All set?
Thank you. Yeah, so the last bit is, I often quip, to prove that we were here, we do like to ask for a picture with the very well-traveled check, which the Senator-elect has now heard the story multiple times, but since this is our only visit in Wareham, you'll notice we're this frugal. It's a, it's a recyclable check, it's dry erase, so that way we're not constantly printing new checks, and there's a nice crease down the middle. There was a particularly windy night in Hall, which would be the complete opposite end of the county from Wareham, where it blew out of my hand and nearly found its way into Nantasket Beach. So I salvaged it, but it took some, it took some minor damage in salvaging it. But as I often quip, the pilgrims kept records. We just like to add a little bit to our records as well. So if we could just approach with the check, that would be great.
Why don't we, we'll come over there somehow.
Sure.
Actually, we'll go over there because I think that's better.
I don't know, we can come over there, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh yeah, I know, it's, I don't know, who gets it after January 1st?
See better days.
Oh, yeah.
Hold on a second. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You sure you don't want to leave it?
Well, I mean, you can have it.
I mean, I can hold it for ransom.
Sure, you can have it. I mean, now the account numbers are all, too.
Yeah.
But there are recent acts to it, you know, 1685, the check numbers when the county was founded, 521-202, the population of Plymouth County as of the last census, and 1221-1620, and the votes arrived.
Yes.
Believe it or not, in the last check, people would try and steal our account information.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not even kidding. For CARES Act, we had to go to court over a couple of...
Of course.
Over a couple of fraudulent draws. So we figured this...
Of course.
Discert both multiple purposes in doing these.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much. Have a very nice Christmas and New Year.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you. I'm now going to jump to the Town Administrator's Report at his request, and Mr. O'Rourke, why don't you come forward and identify yourself? And John Day, he would let, I can't remember her name.
Allison.
Allison, I'm sorry.
Allison McNeil.
Yep, please.
Allison.
Mr. Sullivan, this is part of your report, or it can be your entire report if you want to leave after this.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and I think they can do well on introducing themselves, but, you know, the Energy Aggregation Program, that's one of the things that we worked on, and a former Select Board member, Slaven, had, had worked together in with Serpent, some of the others, and, you know, there's, we're going through another, another procurement of it, if you will, and I just thought with many of the new members of the Select Board did not originally go through, it was important for them to hear what's, what's been going on. I think Mr. O'Rourke and Mr. Neal have, have some pretty impressive figures, too, to let you know of, and I will stop talking and let the, the smart people speak now.
Thank you. Go ahead, John.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for letting Allison and I come before you tonight to give you this short presentation on the renewal of the electricity aggregation.
Can you just, each of you, for the record, say your name and your position?
John O'Rourke, good energy.
And Allison, please.
Allison McNeil, good energy.
Allison McNeil, good energy.
Thank you. Go ahead, John.
Slide, Allison. The, the program was launched in 2016, essentially as part of a large aggregation here in the southeastern Massachusetts. We had contracts, we're on our third renewal right now with Constellation. That run started in December 2023 and runs until November 2025. The reason we're talking about a renewal right now, there have been some changes at the Department of Public Utilities, which is going to get us to revise our plan slightly, which will be in favor of the municipalities. And essentially, this, this current contract goes until November 2025. Our analysts are telling us that the market is going to be very good in early 2025, and that's why we're going to go for the renewal at that point in time. Since the, the launch of the program, Wareham residents and small businesses have saved over $10 million in electricity costs, which is, is quite impressive. That next slide, you can see the graph that shows the aggregation rates as opposed to the ever-source rates. Ever-source is in blue, and the aggregation is in orange, and you can see in most, in most periods, we are below the rate for ever-source, and that's essentially why the program has done so well over the years. That next slide, there have been some changes at the Department of Public Utilities. They've eased some of their regulations, and essentially what we're going to do, we're going to do a revised plan, since our original plan goes back to 2016. So essentially, we're going to update the plan, and that's going to, it used to be it would take years to amend a plan. Now it's going to be very easy to do that. They've streamlined their regulations and the framework for aggregations. They've increased local autonomy without the need for department approval, which is very important, because it used to be that every time you wanted to make a change to a plan, you had to go before the department to get approval. That's not the way it is now. They're giving more authority to the municipalities. There'll be the ability, more ability to innovate new market offerings. We're looking at such items as community solar, to integrate community solar into the aggregation, talking about time-of-use meters that are coming online in various parts of the state right now. There's going to be an ability to add or change green products without going again to the department for approval. Our consultant fee is going to increase by a quarter of a mil. As you know, everybody's expenses have gone up in the last three or four years, as have I, have has ours substantially, so we're going to go up a quarter of a mil. The effect of that on the average resident is about $1.80 per year, so it's not significant. The action items and timeline. The plan is to renew the contract in February or March, and again, that's because our analysts are saying that that is going to be a very good market in which to renew our contract that'll again start in November of next year. From now until January, we're going to complete the required public review of the revised aggregation plan. That's a simple process of public review by your residents. There's going to be an amendment to our original professional services agreement, our PSA. It will just be an indication of the increase in fee. There's going to be a review of the electricity supply agreements from the suppliers, and again, this is all being handled by our team with, with Derek Sullivan. And again, Derek has generally been the, the signatory for the electricity supply agreements. He'll probably continue in that, in that vein. February and March is the target for our going out to bid. Probably, we're, we're looking at, at late February, early March for that. And again, it's because we expect the market to be in very good shape at that point in time. September and October, there'll be public outreach to announce the new rates that will take effect in November, and we will, as usual, provide all the materials for outreach for your residents. There'll be an automatic transition to new prices on the meter read date in November. On that next slide, just goes into the public review of the revised plan, and again, this, the plans have been simplified, which is very good in terms of, of understanding what goes on with these plans. We'll provide the revised aggregation plan. Again, our team is working with Derek to do that, and again, that'll be in accordance with the new guidelines. There'll be a 30-day public review period that's required by the Department of Public Utilities, but no vote is required. It's just a simple 30-day review period where your residents can make comments, ask questions about the revised plan. Again, we provide all of the announcement materials, the press release, the homepage, news blurbs, social media posts, frequently asked questions. Again, that's our team coordinating with Derek to do that. The revised plan will be on the website, and again, we will answer any questions that come up from the public. Once the plan has gone through the 30-day review period, we will submit the plan to the Department of Public Utilities for informational purposes. They will not approve that revised plan, because, again, that's just another change that they have made. They've made it much, much better in this last round of guidelines to make it much easier for municipalities to have more autonomy for their aggregation plans. Questions?
I think maybe it would be helpful if I read into the record what I showed you that Derek had sent to me. Okay. Town of Wareham is holding a 30-day public review period for its revised aggregation plan for Wareham Community Electricity Aggregation. Wareham CEA is our town's official electricity supply program, active since 2019. The aggregation plan describes how our electricity program is structured and operated. Wareham secured approval for our original aggregation plan from the Department of Public Utilities, DPU, in 2017. In July of '24, the DPU issued new rules for aggregation plans called Guidelines for Municipal Aggregators. The Guidelines, the Guidelines expand local authority for cities and towns concerning the operation of their programs and increase public transparency about program operations. The revisions to our aggregation plan ensure that the plan aligns with the new guidelines. The revised plan will not impact Wareham's CEA's current electricity supply options and prices, which are fixed until November of '25 through our supply contract with Constellation. No action is required by existing participants to continue receiving the current pricing. On the program website, wareham, capital C, E, A dot com, you can review both the revised plan and the current plan. You can also watch a short video describing the revised plan and read the DPU guidelines. The program website has a comment form to provide written comments, or you may email support underscore M A plus wareham at goodenergy dot com with the subject line Wareham Plan Comments. Good Energy is the consultant that developed and manages our program on a day-to-day basis, and the public review period is open until January 18th. We will get some of this information up on our website so that the public can actually, you know...
Yes. Again, our team is coordinating with Derek on it.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. Excellent. Any questions?
I have one. Yeah. In looking at the page of your presentation that tracks through the comparison of your rate to the ever-source rate, it looks as if, except for a couple of times when, not sure what might have been going on, but there are a few times when the ever-source rate dips down a bit. But on the whole, you have achieved, as you've said, significant savings over the competitive rate. Do you have any sense at this point how that is going to look going forward? In other words, do you have a good sense of what your price is going to be and what ever-source's price is going to be? And will it look like this or something else?
Well, obviously, we always try to, to get a bid that's below the ever-source rate, as you can see by the graph. We, we can't predict right now what's going to happen at our bid. We do, we do think it'll be below the current rate at this point, and, and very competitive with the, with the ever-source rate at that point in time.
Okay, but you don't have precise numbers at this point?
No, we don't. No.
Okay, that's all I have. Jared, do you have any questions or comments?
I have none at this time.
Thanks. Derek, do you have any questions or comments?
Before we end, you know, former Select Board Member Alan Slaven did want to make sure I, I send greetings to John on his behalf, Johnny. This is working with you.
Please, please, please send my greetings as well to Alan. Alan and I used to work very closely on this. We also served together on the Massachusetts Municipal Association Board. We became very good friends.
And now, this is, it's all worked out well. While a lot of times they say Derek's doing something, you often spell that P-A-T-T-Y, so Patty in the office. She's a, she's a miracle worker and keeps me on track, so thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for us?
No.
No? Then thank you very much for joining us. What made you stop being a selectman in Conway, Mass?
Well, I got, I got voted out because my ideas weren't in tune with some of our residents.
I see. Okay. Thank you very much.
That's what usually happens.
Nice to meet you. Take care.
Have a good night, ladies.
We do have a joint meeting with the sewer commissioners, and so I would ask that the sewer commissioners come forward and sit up here, if you don't mind, and...
Madam Chair, while they're doing that, if you don't mind, just...
Yeah, keep going.
...what I think is very fortuitous, while the two commissioners are there, I wanted to finish up. One, thanking all of you and the other board and committee members as we wrap up the year. It'll be a new year in our next meeting. Thank you all for the hard work you do on behalf of the town. As I said, I get, I get paid for this, you guys don't, so I, yeah, sometimes the people wonder if you're nuts or not to do it, so, and so I thank everybody, and then really thank the... As I said, I get paid for this. You guys don't. So, I... Yeah, sometimes the people wonder if you're nuts or not to do it. So, I thank everybody and then really thank the town employees. They're the ones that make it all work for us, and without them, none of this would move forward. So, in saying that, there's been a lot of work done for the first phase of the SRF funding for the sewer project. As you know, it was a $32 million project in total. We had the first loan amount of $16 million, and we received really great news. You know, we were hoping for a loan forgiveness of a small amount, maybe 1%, 2%, going as high as 10%, I think. We received notification of the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust that out of the first $16 million, $2,384,000 will be forgiven, which is about 14.9% of the loan. So, that's really excellent news, especially for the ratepayers. So, that's, I guess that news is my gift to you guys for the end of the year. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
So, Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas. It is now 7:30, and so I'm going to ask that the Chair of Sewer Commissioners call his board to order, please.
Yeah, I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Sewer Commissioners to order. Have a roll call.
Bob Scanlon.
Scott Sobie.
Sandy Slavin.
Jim Gibberdy.
Thank you. Do you have a quorum present?
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. And you are before us this evening because we have the opportunity to have a joint appointment to an unexpired term on the sewer commissioners. And I believe Mr. Pastor is here.
It's affirmative.
Okay. Do you want to introduce him, or what do you want to do?
Yes, Kerry Pastor. He's a resident of Hamilton Beach, and he has stepped forward to volunteer to fill the position that was vacated by Mr. Pigeon.
Good, great.
Kerry?
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Kerry Pastor, as Jim said, a resident of Hamilton Beach and a president of the association down there for 17 years. And I got involved in talking about the sewer issue going back to the days of the Grindr Pump Public Relations movie and being involved in that and also some other issues. And here I am.
Awesome. You understand that this term would expire May 5th of '25 because you would be replaced when the election comes. Okay. Any questions from...
No. I have a question or two. Your background is impressive. You've got a good background in finance.
Correct.
Looks as if you've been retired for a little while, which, to me, equates to some level of success in what you are doing. So, congratulations on that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask you, without sounding too questioning, why do you want to become a sewer commissioner?
That's the third time I've been asked that question, and I can only say that I want to be involved. People have asked me to be involved. I know it affects myself personally and affects the people down in Hamilton Beach. And to do the job for them, I need to understand what's going on here, too. And I think I can provide with my financial background, my operational background, I can provide a level of expertise and leadership.
Good. That's all I have.
Thanks. Mr. Chadwick, any questions or comments?
I have none. Thank you very much for offering your time for us.
Thank you. I have no questions. I would have asked the same question that Ms. Quirk did, which is... But I have another one.
Yes.
What else are you interested? What are the boards you're interested in? I'm sorry.
Since I've known a few people here in town, and I've got to know this board, and I found out that, I don't mean to be negative, but a lack of cooperation with townspeople that join boards, and I found out that there are many people here that belong to many boards. And as I have gone to different meetings, I've seen the same face. So, yeah, the answer to your question is, I don't know yet. I don't know yet.
Well, we have your name, your address, and your phone number.
That's what you do. You can reach out anytime.
Excellent. I'm going to ask if you have any comments or you have a recommendation?
Oh, I think Kerry is well-suited for the board. He's available to us at a time when we can certainly use the financial expertise. We've got a big project underway right now, as everybody knows, the $36 million with the clarifier and the headworks. We've got a new director down there that's made a major difference in both operation and attitude in the entire area, and I see nothing but positives to come out of Kerry's appointment and the direction the sewer plant's going into the hole right now.
Okay. I just have one other question. You couldn't be here last week because your dad had a birthday?
Yes, my father just turned 102 the other day, last Tuesday night.
That's awesome.
Yes, it is.
That's really nice.
And he's still very upset he didn't get drafted by the Patriots this past spring, but... Thank you.
I will have you make your motion first, and then we will make a motion because we have to both make the appointment.
Okay, well, as Chair, I'll let one of the members make the motion.
I make a motion to approve Kerry Pastor as the next sewer commissioner.
Second.
And your motion actually was Walter Pastor Jr., known as Gary, term to expire May 5th, 2025. Was that your motion?
Yes, correct.
Excellent.
And that's what I seconded.
All in favor from the board?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero zero.
Four zero zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I will accept a motion.
I move to confirm Walter Pastor Jr., also known as Gary, with a term to expire May 5th, 2025, to the sewer commission.
I used the word appoint.
What did I say?
Confirm.
Oh, appoint.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Motion made and seconded to appoint. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
And Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Myself, aye. It is so. Sign the paperwork, my dear.
Signed.
Is it already up here?
No.
Where's the folder? Don't leave without the folder, please.
I'll bring it up.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. And you need to now adjourn your meeting.
I call for the meeting to be adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at, what is it, 7:37?
Nine's good.
I think it's 7:37.
Yeah, it is. Yep.
You need an o'clock.
I know that. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. You will get an email from the office telling you what forms and paperwork you need to fill out, and then you'll get a piece of paper that looks like this, and you'll be able to go to the town clerk and be sworn in. You can't vote until you've been sworn in. But thank you very much.
Just for clarification, my name's Kerry, C-A-R-E-Y.
Kerry.
Pronounced Kerry, okay?
Okay. But your real name is, or your given name is Walter?
Yes, we don't use that.
I understand, but legally, right, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening.
I'm going to accept a motion on the Little Harbor Advisory Committee.
I move to reappoint to the Little Harbor Golf Course Advisory Committee, terms to expire December 31st, 2025, James Gibberdy, Patrick Truppiano, and George Barrett.
I second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve those three individuals on another one-year term. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It is so. And I'll accept a motion on number eight.
I move to renew the year-round common victor licenses for the year 2025 under the provisions of Chapter 140 of the Massachusetts General Law, pending inspections as printed on the agenda, items 1 through 30.
I second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve as printed on the warrant, 1 through 30. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Quirk? Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It is so.
I move to renew the following year-round common victor license, all alcoholic beverages licenses for the year 2025, under the provisions of Chapter 138 of Massachusetts General Law, pending inspections of items 1 through 12, as printed in the agenda.
I second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve pending inspections and paperwork. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It is so.
I move to renew the year-round, the club year-round common victor license for the year 2025, under the provision of Chapter 140 of the Massachusetts General Law, pending paperwork and inspections for BPOE Wareham New Bedford Elks Lodge 73 Incorporated, doing business as BPOE Elks 2855 Cranberry Highway East Wareham.
I second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve as read. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye. You did say pending paperwork and inspections. Next, please.
I move to renew the following club year-round common victor, all alcoholic beverages license for the year 2025, under the provisions of Chapter 140 of the Massachusetts General Law, pending paperwork and inspections for BPOE Wareham New Bedford Elks Lodge 73 Incorporated, doing business as BPOE Elks 2855 Cranberry Highway East Wareham.
I second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve as read. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It is so.
I move to renew the annual entertainment license for the year 2025, weekdays only, under the provisions of Chapter 140, subsection 183A of the Massachusetts General Law, pending paperwork and inspections for items 1 through 8, as printed in the agenda.
I second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve, subject 2. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It is so.
I move to renew the annual entertainment license for the year 2025, Sundays only, under the provisions of Chapter 136 of Massachusetts General Laws, pending paperwork and inspections for items 1 through 8, as printed in the agenda.
I second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve as printed on the agenda. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It is so.
I move to renew the year-round retail packaged goods store, all alcoholic beverage licenses for the year 2025, under the provisions of Chapter 183 of the Massachusetts General Law, pending paperwork and inspections for items 1 through 3, as printed in the warrant.
I second that.
Printed on the agenda?
Agenda.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded to approve as read. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett? Ms. Quirk?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Myself, aye. It is so. Sometimes I do that.
You just try to make sure I'm awake.
Yeah.
I move to renew the following Class 1 used car dealer's license for the year 2025, under Chapter 140 of the Massachusetts General Laws, Ballard Mac Sales and Service Incorporated, doing business as Ballard Truck Center 232-381 Cranberry Highway Wareham.
I second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve as read, pending...
Paperwork and inspections.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It is so.
I move to renew the Class 2 used car dealer's license for the year 2025, under Chapter 140 of the Massachusetts General Law, pending paperwork and inspections for A1 Auto 58 Sandwich Road Wareham, Massachusetts.
I second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve as read, pending all of the inspections and paperwork. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It is so. We need to have a quick discussion about allowing the Board of Health to enclose the rental notices, which you have a copy of, in the real estate bills. Under the law, we have to approve that addition to the mailing. So, I would ask that, we do this every year. So, I would ask that you make that motion.
I move to allow the Board of Health to enclose the rental notice in the real estate tax bills.
I second that.
Motion made and seconded to allow. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It is so. The borrowing, the next thing to authorize the town treasurer to borrow $650,000 from the stabilization fund to pay for the new patrol boat, that funding will be paid back from borrowing, which will be arranged later on this fiscal year. So, we do have the funds available in the stabilization fund, and I would ask for a motion unless you have any questions about it.
I vote to authorize town treasurer to borrow $650,000 from the stabilization fund for the new patrol boat.
I second that.
Motion made and seconded to include, I mean, to approve his borrowing. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, yes, it is so. Okay. The next thing we have is to talk about the items that have been submitted to be placed on the warrant for the January 13th special town meeting. You have a draft copy in front of you. I would ask the clerk to read the title, and I will give a brief explanation, and then we will vote to place it on the warrant. This is nothing other than including it in the warrant. It is not a vote to approve or recommend to the town meeting. I just want to clarify that.
So, do I make a motion to include...
One, each one.
Okay. I make a motion to include Article 1, Available Funds Transfer for Solar Experts.
I second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend that to the town, be included in the town meeting warrant. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick? You have a question? I'm sorry.
No, no question. I'm going to say yes real quick.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It is so. This is an article that probably Ms. Quirk will be speaking to on the town meeting floor as she was previously an associate member of the planning board, and she is now the liaison to the planning board. Next.
I move to place an article on the warrant to approve funding to purchase AD Marion I move to place an article on the warrant to approve funding to purchase AD Marion Road.
Is there a second?
Second that.
Excellent. This is a property that happens to be adjacent to the town property. Mr. Sullivan has his eye on it for future municipal purposes, and I think it's a very good idea. So there's a recommendation to put it on the warrant. Is any further discussion on that? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so.
I move to include an Article Number 3 Accessory Dwelling Moratorium on the warrant for the special town meeting.
I second that.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that? This is an article submitted by the Planning Department, putting a moratorium in place to make sure that we understand what the state is recommending, as well as the state understanding what it's recommending. But further in this draft warrant, there is also a bylaw about ADs presuming the state bounces a moratorium back to us, so that's why there are two articles. Any further discussion on the motion to include that Number 3, which is accessory dwelling moratorium?
I have one clarifying question. This has nothing to do with seasonal community designation, correct?
That's correct. Correct. Okay, Ms., the motion made and seconded. Any further discussion to include? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so. We have two minutes because his coverage is about to come back.
I vote to include Article 4 Large-Scale Ground-Matted Solar Installations on the warrant for the special town meeting.
I second that.
Motion made and seconded. This is an article, again, drafted by the Planning Department, and hopefully will help the town defend itself against the unreasonable laws that seem to have been?
I was trying to say something.
Yeah.
I'm a yes, but I got to go.
Okay, thank you very much. The record will show that he departs at 7:49. Okay. So the motion is to include it, and he's already voted yes, and they have?
Aye.
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so. And number five?
I move to include Article 5 Accessory Dwelling Bylaw on the warrant for the special town meeting.
I second that.
And again, as I said earlier, that would be an article presuming that the state would not allow us to have a moratorium. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. This is only to include it in the warrant. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.[1514.86]